Mike, Ron, you guys ready?
Yes.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome everyone to the June 6th meeting of the Cumberland Town Council. Welcome, everyone. Our first area of business this evening is the approval of minutes. So, have a motion.
A second.
And a second. A discussion on the minutes. See none. Our call for vote, all in favor of adoption of the minutes unanimous. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the manager's report. Mr. Shane.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've asked Chief Rumsey to give the council and the community an update on the multitude of projects and safety initiatives ongoing with the police department, so chief. And just to let the council know, the chief is double booked tonight, so I do have to get him out of here pretty quick.
Thank you. Mr. Shane, councilors, thanks for having me here on what is actually the sixth anniversary of my higher date with the town of Cumberland as your police chief. So, June 6, 2016, I started my work here, and I'm happy to be with you to celebrate. You know, following the events down in Uvalde, Texas, I'm guessing that many, if not most, people in the community have some serious concerns about school safety. I'm really happy to hear that the federal government's going to be doing an investigation into exactly what happened down there and establishing a timeline. And, believe me, I'll be one of the first people to read the report when it comes out so that I can find out what happened and what points there may be that we can learn to better prepare ourselves for a potential catastrophe here. So, there may be time for criticism of what happened in Texas, and there may be a place for that criticism. I don't think it's now, I don't think it's here, and I definitely don't think it's for me to say, but I do think that it's appropriate to take a few minutes to let you know, like, what we're doing here to try to make sure that our school system and our campus can be just as safe as it can be. So, with your permission, I'll do that. You know, when something terrible happens in society, everybody suddenly focuses in, and rightfully so, pays attention to something to see what happened and why, and then after a while, move on to focus their attention on other things. I just want to assure the community that that's not the case when it comes to me and school safety. I have always been concerned about school safety. I'm concerned about school safety now, and I'll be concerned about school safety for the rest of my career. Every day, I worry about what could happen and try to do the best that I can to train and equip and prepare my folks to respond in the event that there's an active assailant that ever arrives on our campus. To that end, we, I think, do a very good job in Cumberland of equipping our police officers with modern tools so that they have what they need to respond. I'm not going to go into a ton of detail tonight on exactly what those tools are. I get worried about going too far into the weeds on exactly what our capabilities are because I think that can inform maybe the intentions and the actions of somebody who would like to come and try to harm somebody. So, just believe me when I say that with your support and the town manager's support, we are very well equipped to do our jobs. I believe all of you have met Amy Owen, our current school resource officer, and I just want you to know that I have the utmost confidence in her and the work that she does on campus. She is quick to respond, she is nuanced in her approach to dealing with students to try to make sure that the school campus is safe, that concerns are investigated, that the welfare and safety of all school students are taken into account, even the students that may have committed an error and have gotten theirself into her office. She just does an amazing job, and we're very lucky to have her, and I want the community to know that. The MSAD 51 has an active school safety committee. I'm really pleased that Amy and myself, along with Chief Small, and a good cross-section of other folks are very involved in that committee as we meet to discuss safety programs, the school safety plan, and infrastructure upgrades to make the school a safer place to be. We are active partners. I feel like our voice is listened to when we express concerns and ideas, and so I think it's important for the community to know that as well. At the school, they do a process called behavioral threat assessments. Threat assessment is a violence prevention strategy that involves identifying student threats to commit a violent act, determining the seriousness of that threat, and then developing intervention plans to protect potential victims and address the underlying problem or conflict that stimulated the threatening behavior. This is accomplished by a multidisciplinary team of professionals, including school officials and our school resource officers. So, we're involved in those behavioral threat assessments when they occur on campus. Really excited that this fall, the school is going to be instituting an anonymous threat reporting system so that students at the MSAD have a place that they can anonymously report threats to harm others, or even a threat by a student to harm themselves. This is going to be 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. The tips are managed by live human professionals that help, they have metrics to help weed out false tips, to direct information from tips to where they need to be, and sometimes that may be just school social workers, or councilors, or school officials. But if there is any threat to commit violence, if there's a threat to kill self or others, or harm self or others, that goes to all the school administrators and myself, the school resource officer, and others in my department so that we can start taking actions to try to make sure that people are safe. Very, very excited about that. Probably you know this, you may have seen it on the news recently, but we're very committed to immediately and thoroughly investigating any threat that occurs on the campus or is made outside the campus, about the campus. And I can tell you that the speed of technology is just dizzying now. Last week, there was a threat that was made on an anonymous social media site that was seen by a Cumberland resident who immediately called us. And once we got this threat, which was a nonspecific threat to shoot off a school, we immediately went to work with the law enforcement support team of that social media website, that social media app, who were able to provide us information like the number where that threat was made from, and even the GPS coordinates of where the person was when they made that threat. Within literally minutes, we had notified superintendents and principals from Falmouth, Yarmouth, and Cumberland school districts. People were taking steps to make sure that the students on their campus were safe. Turned out that the case belonged to the Falmouth Police. They investigated and had someone in custody within an hour. It is just amazing how fast it all works. It's coordinated, we work so well with our neighbors, we all call upon each other, and it's just a great, great partnership. Lastly, I want to share with you, for those of you that may not be aware, that this fall, right before school starts, we're going to be helping the MSAD to train every single faculty and staff member in ALIS. For those of you that are not familiar, ALIS is an active assailant response system that gives folks on campus some options of how to respond if there's an active assailant in the school. It stands for alert, lockdown, inform, counter, and evacuate. We will have five instructors from the police department that are going to be trained by the fall, and we're going to help provide this to the about 400 faculty and staff members of MSAD 51. ALIS provides school staff and students of appropriate age with options in the face of an active assailant. The program is scaled to be age-appropriate, so what you learn when you're in kindergarten really is nothing. The teachers learn some things, the kids don't learn anything. And as the students get older and are able to comprehend and understand and digest and synthesize some information, they're provided some information about how they can take a role in their own safety if the situation requires it. And I understand that, Mr. Shane, may want to have me back after the school year starts, once we've completed that training, to tell you all how it went, but I'm very, very excited about it. We'll be doing some things internally, too, between now and then, to just take early lessons learned from Texas and hone our training on breaching and making entry into schools and working with the fire department like we've done for years on how to respond and then help provide assistance to folks in need after a critical incident. And I'm proud of all that stuff, but I really think that, at the end of the day, if I was a parent who watches the news, I would say to myself and maybe my friends and maybe my police chief, if I had a chance to talk to them, that's all great, but it doesn't make a bit of difference if there's a critical incident at a school and you don't go in the school. It just doesn't matter if you don't go in the school. And so, for a couple of days, I really pondered, like, is there a way that I could possibly give the community some level of comfort about our commitment to taking the proper action if the situation ever required it? So, I wrote a letter that I'm very pleased was signed by every single member of the department, and I want to share it with you, and then I'll provide a copy to you if you would like for the meeting minutes. But I just want to read it to you, and then I'm going to leave here, go over to the school board meeting, and share that letter with them. So, it says, "Dear members of the MSAD 51 community, we, the undersigned members of the Cumberland Police Department, grieve with you over the recent tragedy in Uvalde, Texas. We appreciate the anxiety and concern that you may be feeling as you send your children, our most precious community members, to school. Perhaps you wonder if your police department is trained, equipped, prepared, and resolved to defeat an active assailant on our campus. Most of us are parents, many of us are siblings, all of us were once children and students. We know in our hearts that if we had experienced the terror of an armed intruder intent on harming us, our teachers and classmates, we would have hoped for one thing, a brave, unflinching, uniformed police officer to rush in and save us. We are all united and unwavering in our commitment to take any measure necessary, including the sacrifice of our lives, to protect your children and your community's teachers. We are trained to respond immediately and to move decisively toward any threat. We are prepared to neutralize any such threat using physical force, including lethal force. We are equipped with modern tools to make entry into any school, even if it has been barricaded to deny us entry. We have trained and will continue to train with our public safety partners at the Cumberland Fire Department to assist with the delivery of life-saving treatments to injured students, faculty, and staff during an incident. News of mass casualty incidents around the nation rightfully spark fear and uncertainty in parents, faculty, staff, and even students. Please know that for us, these concerns are ever-present. We are proud of the collaborative and proactive relationship we maintain with the MSAD 51 administration regarding school safety and pre-incident planning. We consider how and where we will enter buildings in an emergency and ensure our equipment is accessible and in working order. In the coming months, we will seek to learn any lessons available from Texas. We will continue training, planning, and preparing. We will enhance, at any opportunity, our skills and equipment. The solemn vow we make to you today will never change. We pledge that without hesitation, we will act. Very respectfully, Amy Owen, School Resource Officer, Antonio Ridge, Sergeant, Scott Hindi, Sergeant, Jacob LaChance, Sergeant, Benjamin Burns, Detective, Matthew Merriman, Patrol Officer, Joseph Burke, Patrol Officer, Ryan Rudin, Patrol Officer, Nicholas Descanio, Patrol Officer, Christopher Schofield, Patrol Officer, and Charles Rumsey, Chief of Police." So, I'm proud that everybody jumped up to sign that letter. I think it's awesome, and I really hope that if there's folks watching at home tonight, maybe parents, that that means something and that they feel a little bit better about sending their little ones off to school. So, appreciate your time and happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Chief. That is a bold statement, and frankly, I would have expected nothing less from all of you. Anybody like to comment?
Thank you, Chief. I think the community appreciates it.
Mr. Chair, can I pass that off to you?
And Chief, on your way out, we have a cupcake for you for your anniversary with us.
Leave one for me, though.
Thanks, Chief.
I do have a quick question. Sorry.
Sure.
It regards communication with the general public. Do you have a plan in place with the SAD around how the public is to be informed when incidents happen, or is that on your agenda of things to accomplish with the SAD?
Great question. We do have a safety plan that does discuss emergency messaging. That's something that the school will immediately do using their communications channels through parents. I know they have email lists, and they'll use social media. We'll be working with our communications director on social media and through the crier. We have the capability through the regional communication center to send out, like, reverse 911 calls through a system called Red Alert. You can sign up for it online. If you haven't, it's great. And, but I understand, having studied this and having been to trainings and learning from police chiefs and superintendents that have been through this, it's just the most chaotic
Right.
chaotic situation you can ever imagine, and for a few minutes, my attention is going to be
Safety.
is going to be safety. And, you know, when I hear about a critical incident and there's a police chief in a command post, it makes me laugh because I'm not going to be in a command post. I'm going to be in the school. And I might make my way to a command post well after everything's done, but because of that speed of communication that we talk about, this whole community is going to know what's happened before and before I get a chance to probably start messaging to the community, and it's just going to be the worst day of our lives. That's just the way it's going to be. And our immediate focus is going to be on saving lives.
Right.
And then after that, we'll worry about communication and reunification and all those things. But that's a long answer to your short question. Yes, we're working on that. Sorry.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
All right, sir. Thank you very much. I'm off to the school board.
Enjoy that cupcake.
I'll continue with the manager's report. The Portland-Auburn Trail and Rail Committee Council had its second meeting just a few weeks ago. We pretty much meet toward the end of each month. The next meeting, they are trying to coordinate rides with those members of that group that have not been on the trail because until you've ridden the trail, it's a challenge, especially from Portland at least into about halfway through Falmouth. It's a difficult trail to look at, but my push has been for looking at the options and allowing for future collaboration between different communities and maybe different segments of the trail. Over time, could be built, but my commitment has been to a rail and trail type of facility, and they have constructed this in the, I think, in the Westbrook-Goram area pretty successfully. So, it has been done, it can be done, and I think it should be looked at pretty aggressively. For those of you who don't know, any recommendation that comes with a trail-only comment is only temporary in nature. By law, it has to allow for a rail to be placed back on top of it should the rails become active again in the future. So, there is a long way to go with this. This is far, far from over. Our commission is really going to be an advisory comment to the DOT commissioner, and then he can choose to do what he wants with that report as he reports back to the legislature. There are lots of federal dollars that will be available for these types of initiatives. They'll be very competitive in nature, and even in Maine, it'll be very competitive. There are lots of areas of the state that are looking for the same, same money. The one thing that is a little bit concerning, fortunately, we have all the towns represented because they're the ones that are talking about, you know, can we look at some of the impact to a butter? Can we look at what's on the table for, you know, buffering and protection of properties and those type of things? And our consultant is truly at the starting line, so we hope to have some of those at the next meeting and some graphics that we can show people because people are visual. They want to see what it potentially could look like, not so much just lots of words and lots of verbiage. So, we're hoping to have some of those that I can bring back to you next month, but, you know, it's going to be interesting. And balancing that group has been difficult because everybody wants to have, you know, this wonderful trail system, you know, all the way to Auburn, but the biggest challenge I see, honestly, is right at the end of our road, right at the end of Greeley Road at Yarmouth Junction because that's where two railroads intersect, and the CSX is coming through there, and to try to impact that in any way will be very challenging. And that's why I think the piece that has to be looked at is, you know, what are the alternative options to basically go off-road and go onto a paved, you know, shoulder somewhere and then get back on a section of rail where it may not be developed? And all those conversations are still in front of us, and unfortunately, I wish I had more news. It just seems like we're kind of stuck at the starting line right now, but I'm hoping we do pick up momentum over the next few months. I had an interesting discussion with another DOT group today on the 295 Bridge here at the end of Tuttle Road. That was really interesting in the information they shared. What you might not know is that the Johnson Road and Bucknum Road projects are out to bid right now, and if you can't go over the Tuttle Road Bridge and the other two bridges are under construction, how's all this going to be, you know, coordinated with especially fire response? I'm not worried about the police. They can go over the posted bridge, but the fire trucks can't. And our response is typically from Yarmouth and Falmouth, and you knock down two Falmouths, we're going to be living on an island here pretty soon, and we want to be really careful. So, that was kind of an eye-opener that both of those bridges, which are critical to us basically getting over to the foreside, are going to be under construction. But more to come as that gets closer. I did discuss our concerns about making sure that there are at least paved shoulders going over that bridge, and if they can construct a sidewalk for some time in the distant future, that it would be, this would be the time to do it because it'll be another 50 years before they do anything to that bridge after this chance. So, that was interesting as well. This Saturday, I had the privilege and honor to represent you and the town at the 150th celebration. We have another poster to put up in our hallway about the celebration. We have one of the original posters on display as well, so this will probably go right next to it. It was a great event. Representative Steve Moriarty was there as well. He was a lot funnier than me, Steve, so I don't know who's writing your material lately, but they're doing a good job. So, Steve did a great job and read a legislative sentiment from Augusta, which was very, very well-received, so thank you for being there for us as well, Steve. We were supposed to have a report tonight from the Historical Society, but Judy Gagnon could not be here tonight, and it's important to have both Judy and Deb Dugas available to present. These two ladies do an amazing job with the annual scavenger hunt for the fundraiser for the Historical Society, and I said, "Let's delay it when you both could be here," and that made a lot more sense to the Historical Society as well. So, they will be back, but it may be a month or so away. The last thing I want to just report quickly to the council, the Main Street sidewalk improvements, essentially from Greeley Road down to the library, and then from the Apple Barrel on Blanchard Road up to the Commons on Tuttle Road, that project will, is a 50/50 project with MDOT. That project originally was at $200,000, and after multiple neighborhood meetings, we've increased it to $600,000, and that will be going out to bid next year, not in this year's project load, primarily because of the solar pet-activated lights we're looking to buy to basically identify some of these crosswalks. We've had multiple meetings with the police department and the Bike and Pet Safety Group at MDOT, and a lot of these are back-ordered almost a year. So, it made more sense to let some of the construction pricing stabilize and come down a little bit, and this project will include a rehab of our sidewalks on Main Street. It will include all the pet safety items that you need for those crosswalks, the truncated domes, you see those little domes at the end with the little bubbles in the concrete? That's just, basically identifies an area of change for somebody that might be visually impaired. That will be, I think we have 36 of those to put in along Main Street. And just some more safety improvements, especially out in front of the MIW. You're not supposed to have a crosswalk where you don't have a landing area and a sidewalk. They're not supposed to land on roads, they're not supposed to land in shoulders, but that's what we had, and that's what we did. So, with these improvements, those will change. You'll see small areas that'll be curbed and basically have a safety area on each side of the road. One side of our road obviously does have a sidewalk, but the other is absent that. There'll be some new sidewalk sections in that area as well, but for the most part, we're looking at safety. One of the things that we really are concerned about is the safety from essentially Main Street until you almost get up to Sunny Field. When you come from Sunny Field from the west and heading toward the east, you come through there, and all of a sudden, when you get near the Apple Barrel, it just feels like everything kind of scrunches in on you. The guardrails are there, the shoulders are a little bit more narrow, and the speed has not quite dropped down to 25 at the posted speed limit. So, we're looking to try to add some other safety improvements in that area that will kind of identify drivers that, hey, something different is happening here, and you need to slow down. Our police chief, Chip Rumsey, was there as well, and he basically doesn't want it to turn into a, you know, a, you know, look like the auto mile in Saco where everything's lit up and everything's flashing, because what happens then, it actually goes the opposite. It basically distracts the drivers. So, we want to warn them early and then basically look at some speed monitoring devices to get the traffic to slow down, especially through the school zones. So, that project will be going out to bid this winter. We hope to have a final presentation for the community this fall and to the council as well, just to let you know what it might look like and give you an example of some of the changes that are on-tack for that area. So, and finally, we have been working with our neighbors in Cumberland and Falmouth to put together a joint statement to the Public Utilities Commission on behalf of the three communities for the tremendous increase that Summit is proposing for all its customers. And Councilor Foster is going to read that tonight so that the community is aware that, you know, the town council and staff have been working together to try to do something about this, and we hope it has an impact, so.
Yes, and, you know, before I jump into this, I do want to recognize and say thank you to our town manager for really jumping on this. The coordination and partnership that you've built with the towns of Falmouth and Yarmouth, I think, just enabled the speed of response on this, so thank you, and we recognize that. So, the statement goes as follows. It's a, it's to, as Town Manager Shane just noted, the State of Maine Public Utilities Commission. The towns of Cumberland, Falmouth, and Yarmouth collectively, the towns, submit the following joint comment in response to Summit Natural Gas of Maine Inc.'s, otherwise known as Summit, petition for an alternative rate plan, the ARP, and the Commission's April 2022 procedural order directing, filing of comments. Residential gas customers within Cumberland, Falmouth, and Yarmouth collectively account for over half of Summit's total customer base. As such, any increase in Summit's rate will disproportionately affect the town's citizens and is thus of great concern to the towns. Specifically, Summit's ARP proposes a 16% increase in residential rates in year one and then requests an allowance for additional annual increases of up to 15% in years two through seven. If approved and fully utilized, a typical residential gas customer in Cumberland, Falmouth, or Yarmouth could see their monthly gas bill triple over the next seven years. A substantial increase in the cost of a basic utility that provides for heating, cooking, and the production of hot water will have an undoubtedly negative effect on all residents, especially those who are living on fixed incomes, and particularly when coupled with the current upward trajectory of the cost of other basic goods and services. The towns do not dispute that Summit is entitled to a reasonable return on its investment in the infrastructure that provides this service, consistent with appropriate accounting principles used by the commission across all rate cases. The towns are also interested in seeing Summit remain a viable service provider within these communities. However, ratepayers should not be held captive to rate increases that are largely necessitated by Summit's miscalculation of the cost and rate of return on its substantial infrastructure build-out over the past decade. Many of these ratepayers have already spent thousands of dollars to convert their homes from oil to natural gas, and now will have no other option than to shoulder the brunt of this proposed rate increase to offset this miscalculation. The impact of the ARP on customers within the towns and in other territories served by Summit necessitates both careful review and substantial scrutiny of the ARP by the commission. Respectfully submitted by Alyssa Tibbetts, Esquire, and Benjamin T. McCall, Esquire, attorneys of the towns of Cumberland, Falmouth, and Yarmouth. Thank you.
That conclude, Jerry Marksville?
It does. Thank you, Bob.
Thank you. Thank you. We have an absence here this evening, and I should have mentioned it sooner, but anyways, I can't let it go any further. Mark Seacrest has a new baby daughter, and now I'm looking for her name.
Ingrid Winter.
Say that louder.
Ingrid Winter.
Ingrid Winter. Anyways, our best wishes for the new addition to his family and health and well-being of the mother and the daughter. All right, so, back to official business here. Next item on our agenda is public discussion. Public discussion is for comments on items that are not on the agenda. Comments are limited to five minutes per person. Rebuttal comments will be limited to two minutes. Public discussion topics may be brought up again under new business for further council discussion. Is there anybody from the public who would like to address the council on items not on the agenda? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. Teri Maloney-Kelly from Maloney Ridge Way. I want to congratulate Deb and Judy for a great scavenger hunt that was put on for the Historical Society, and as a fundraiser, they did something a little bit different this year. They included some living treasures within our town, of which my dad, Bob Maloney, was one, Glenn Hutchins, and Carolyn Small. I had the great pleasure of being able to see all the teams come because because I was the official photographer at my dad's. But it was just really such an uplifting event. And it was wonderful to see so many folks throughout our community participating. And it was kind of interesting because I knew what was going on and I had to keep it a secret from the rest of my family. And one of my sisters said to me, hey, well, let's do a team and let's do the scavenger hunt. And I'm like, oh, what do I say now, you know? So they did a wonderful job. I cannot even imagine the coordination and the being secret. That was the hard part, being secret. So congratulations to them. Also, thank you to all the folks in town who put on the Memorial Day parade. It was fabulous to have it back. So I'm hoping that, you know, folks will get back into that rhythm and make sure that they're in town versus out of town on Memorial Day to participate or be on the sidelines. And Chairman Vale, your words were very heartfelt and touching. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, legislation and policy. Item 22-068, to hold a public hearing to consider and act on a consent order with Randall and Alvin Kopp for property located at map R007, Lot 57C, Pointerway. And before we get started, I believe there is a request by Counselor Kopp.
I'd like to recuse myself, so.
Anybody opposed? Done. Thank you. This was an item on our last agenda, last meeting. And at that meeting, there was two amendments made to the presentation and the consent agreement. And the item is now a public hearing this evening. And anyways, the litigation between the town and Mr. Kopp have come to an end. And an agreement has been formed to mitigate the damage that was done on the property and bring it into conformance with what is accepted for that area and that zoning area in town. And there's a timeline placed on the improvements and the occupancy permit for the premises and limitation on types of construction equipment that we kept on the property. Is there anything that Mr. Manager, you'd like to add before I open this up?
No, unfortunately, Mr. Chair, the current document did not appear on our website. The one that you have before you added two items that you amended at your last meeting. So I'll give the Maloney family my copy so they can have the actual one that would be executed by the judge. So that was just item six and 15, as you elaborated. And specifically, it says the work shall commence no later than May 1st, 2023, so it can get through the construction and growing season. And the other item basically acknowledges the terms of the consent order kind of don't override the requirement to get an occupancy permit. So they still require that they get an occupancy permit for the work done. And that essentially was the crux of the two things that you added to the order that we presented at your last meeting. I think they're very small in nature, but I think they are important and they will be included in the document forwarded to the judge.
So this is a public hearing this evening, and I'd like to open it up to the public for comments, considerations, concerns, and just if you have something to voice. Is there anybody from the public who would like to address us? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much. Once again, I'm Teri Maloney Kelly from Maloney's Ridgeway. I am a property owner adjacent to the property owned by Randy Kopp. Do you remember what you were doing October 11th, 2010? Perhaps not, because that was 11 years, seven months, and 26 days ago. It was the first time I came before our elected leadership of my town asking for help and protection in our neighborhood for what was then and throughout the eight years of operation, an illegal gravel extraction business. My request also included reviewing the ordinance that allows water extraction and storage. These industrial operations were allowed in our residential zones, affecting 80% of our citizens at that time. Not only were our natural resources under attack, but our daily lives were being bombarded with the effects that this type of operation brings with it. That was the beginning of many years of noise, lost sleep, environmental violations, daily destruction of our public roadways from the illegal loaded dump trucks, thousands of hours of wasted time, resources, and taxpayers' monies spent by our town officials and employees monitoring and negotiating with Mr. Kopp, and fielding complaints from citizens whose quality of life was being invaded seven days a week, any given time of the day. The town council at that time decided to make amendments to the ordinance to remove the water extraction and storage. However, they declined to take action on the residential gravel extraction ordinance. We formed a citizens group, gathered signatures, put a referendum question on the June 14th, 2011 ballot to remove gravel extraction from residential zones. The citizens of this town made their voices heard and 63% approved the change in this ordinance. Although we thought that would put an end to the industrial operation next door, it did not. For the next five to seven years, there was a daily test of acceptance because of the violation of the quality of life in our neighborhood. One would think you would become accustomed after five to seven years of the house shaking, the dust flying in the air, the sounds from the equipment, the dump trucks beeping and banging their tailgates, equipment being left in the reverse gear putting out backup beats for an hour or more at a time, having to keep the windows closed during the summer to soften the noise, finding alternative sleeping arrangements when family members were on night shift and having to sleep during the day, having to move outdoor outings inside because of the noise. Lastly, and the hardest part for me to deal with, was when my husband would have to wear his earplugs during the day while trying to rest in the summer of 2016 while battling cancer. There was no getting away from it. In addition, the illegal operation gave a black eye to the earth extraction businesses in our area, as well as the large, longstanding Kopp family, even though many were opposed to what was going on. The upsides were few but worth mentioning. I became active in the business of the town. Through that journey, I've met many wonderful neighbors, new and old. I watched our town become something I never would have imagined it in less than 10 years. We are now the wealthiest per capita town in Maine and growing every day. Our school system is one of the best and folks are flocking to partake of the benefit. Anyone wanting to sell their home is living the dream. Our ordinances have actively been reviewed and revamped. New citizens have been elected to town council to help Cumberland navigate its new status. Our new times have put a higher degree of importance to the residential quality for our citizens. What remained the same throughout the past 11-plus years is that our town manager, Bill Shane, and code enforcement officer, Bill Longley, and all of the staff at the town hall have respected us, advocated, thought, listened, and put in long hours defending our neighborhood and the right to equality of life. A thank you is hardly adequate for the support and trust given and taken during this timeframe. It has been 4,265 days since I came before this elected leadership and asked for help. Today, I ask that you approve the consent agreement with Mr. Kopp. It is time that Mr. Kopp is made to comply with all of the rules and regulations that any other residential citizen in this town has to abide by. There is nothing special about him. By consenting to this agreement, it demonstrates support for all of the dedication put forth by our town staff over this long time period. Lastly, it will signal a new era for our neighborhood, one that will bring us in line with my fellow citizens throughout Cumberland. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? I'll close the public hearing. I think I can speak on behalf of the council and the staff and address the issue, I guess, if you want to call it that. It's unfortunate that such time elapsed. It's unfortunate that people live in a community and don't respect the desires of the majority. It's, I think that I can say on behalf of the Kopp family, all the ones that I have done business with over the years, operated in an entirely different manner. This just would not happen. And so I have enormous respect for the Kopp family. That being said, we have a consent agreement before us. Is there any questions amongst the counselors about the intent of this agreement and the time and amendments that we've made to it? Anything else that we might add or subtract?
I'm happy, Bob, with the safeguards that are in this. And that was my concern in the beginning is we can come to an agreement, but if we don't have any teeth in it, and this thing's got teeth. And Teri, I'm so sorry what your family's been through. It's BS. And, you know, I'm glad we stuck it out. I'm glad you stuck it out. And I'm hoping this is the end, hopefully optimistic. But we'll see, but it's got teeth in it, which is important.
I agree with the sentiments of Counselor Eads. I, that sidewalk, when we took it probably 10 years ago, was unbelievable. I just could not believe how the land had been treated. And to see that, you know, he didn't even mention that there was a pond on that property that's gone. It's just virtually gone, that someone can destroy the land in such a massive way. I truly hope this has the teeth that we need.
Nothing from right, nope, I'm happy where we are.
All right.
I have to make a motion.
Yes, please.
I move to approve and authorize for submission to the main superior court a proposed consent judgment in litigation pertaining to the property of Randall E. Kopp and Alvin Kopp located on Pointerway, map R07, Lot 57C.
Second.
A motion and second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for vote. All in favor? unanimous. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is item 22-069, to hold a public hearing to consider and act on approval of annual victualers licenses for nonprofit organizations for the period of July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2023. This is an annual exercise that we take. Many of the organizations you're probably familiar with, Lions Club, Soccer Club, football, Sub River Little League, the churches in the community, North Yarmouth Congregational Church, Tuttle Road Methodist Church, lacrosse, et cetera, et cetera. So we have all the applications in front of us. And as has been pointed out, some of the presidents' names or secretaries' names have changed as people have moved in and moved out and other people have stepped up to take their place. But the applications are complete and...
They are not.
They're not?
They are not. We only have applications. We do not have applications from any of the sports organizations except for Little League.
So... Would you like to remove those from the list?
I actually saw that and tried to take a proactive stance. But it was, you know, last minute because I was reviewing my work again. I have actually emailed the athletic director to ask that he contact those booster organizations to get those applications in. I would propose that we accept the victualers licenses for the people whose applicants we have received for this year. We do not have one from Cumberland Soccer Club, Greeley Football Boosters, Cumberland Boys Lacrosse Boosters, or Cumberland Girls Lacrosse Boosters.
We're happy to bring those back at a future date. This is truly an administrative exercise.
Yeah, let's approve the ones that, I would really like to just approve the ones that have been submitted.
We could just table it.
And then have the others, hopefully they'll come in a nice packet.
We can table the item and then approve them all as...
Whatever you're...
Yeah, I wouldn't penalize the ones that did it correctly. I'd move forward and we can bring the second batch at a later date.
Yeah, let's do the ones, because what if they have a summer event or something? You know, what if the Lions do something 4th of July weekend or, you know?
Right, all right.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
No, I think that's, I would agree with Charlie to do the ones we have.
So we have the North Yarmouth, Cumberland North Yarmouth Lions Club, the Methodist Church, the 4-H, Cumberland North Yarmouth Little League, Congregational Church, and Tuttle Road Community Church.
I'll make a motion.
I'll accept that.
I move to approve the annual victualers licenses for the following nonprofit organizations for the period of July 1st, 2022, through June 30th, 2023. That includes the Cumberland North Yarmouth Lions Club, West Cumberland United Methodist Church, Cumberland County 4-H Leaders Association, Cumberland North Yarmouth Little League, North Yarmouth Congregational Church Men's Club, Tuttle Road Community Church.
Second.
Motion made and second. Any discussion, public hearing? Oh, that pesky public hearing. Was anyone, is there any member of the public who would like to address us on this one? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Motion second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Thank you.
Sorry to be that little mosquito buzzing in.
Oh, boy, I'm telling you, the beatings I perceive.
Mosquito season is here.
All right, item 22-070, to consider and act on the formation of a housing task force to be appointed by the town council to provide recommendations and ways to facilitate the development of affordable housing in the community. This has been a bit of a roundabout process to get where we are this evening. We've had two workshops. We've had input from Christina Egan from the Great Paul and Council of Government. We've had conversation with the church leadership. We've had a community, almost like a neighborhood meeting. And so we've arrived where we are tonight with the idea of formatting a task force made up of community members that will look at the issues of what the town's needs are specifically in housing, affordable housing, senior housing, multi-generational housing, asylum seekers. So it's an inclusive list. Our charge is that the committee would be back in six months to make recommendations to the council, at which time we would look at it. The initial recommendation, I think, here in our packet was a... The initial recommendation, I think, here in our packet was a seven-member seven-member advisory task force. I didn't receive anybody's input that said it should be larger or smaller. I think that my recommendation would be that we would look at applicants and before we just say, if we got 10 people, I'd say take 10 people. If we got 20 people, then I think we should probably take a look at narrowing it down. But I think that, I had a young fellow, actually Greg Sweet's son approached me this weekend. He said, you know, my wife and I would like to build in this community. We're, we're looking to find ways to do it. He said, I, you know, he said, I've got some experience as a an engineer that I might be able to, some help. And he said, I'd like to be on that, on that committee. So there is, there is interest by people, so. Anybody want to add, subtract, or comment?
I also had a former student reach out. He's a, he's in graduate school and a young member of our community who's also interested in serving on such a task force, thinks it's a great idea. And I'm just so impressed. That's now two young people. And, you know, we have to make our community available for young people to live here. So I can understand their interest in such a task force.
This is not a public hearing, but would anybody from the public like to address us on this matter before we move to deliberations? Yes, ma'am?
I always like to make my time worthwhile when I come down, so it's a trifecta tonight. I am really encouraged. I, after the last council meeting in which this was discussed, I went home just not feeling great, you know, thinking, wow, some people, it just felt like it's okay if we're not accessible. And so I'm happy to hear that we are moving forward with a task force. And I really do hope that you will make it diverse from the younger to the older because those are our two big needs in this community. So thank you.
Yes, ma'am?
I'm Reverend Allison Smith from the Congregational Church. And I just want to thank the council for your thoughtful discussion at the last meeting and urge you to move forward this, with this. It is so vital. It's a, it's a need not only in Cumberland but across our state. And we have the capacity to be creative, to try to find solutions here. And I think it is, would benefit the well-being of all people. And I just continue to be mindful of the violence that's happening for people in Ukraine and thinking about how communities can rally and use resources well and welcome others as well as provide for those within the community. And so I'm excited about the possibility.
Thank you. Anybody else? So one of the things that, that struck me with this ongoing conversation is the, as Allison points out, it really is, is what we're really trying to achieve is we're trying to provide housing for our elderly to be able to stay in this community. It is providing housing for our young people who want to come back or don't want to leave at all our community. It's the diversity of housing stock, which we know there is not much diversity here in the town of Cumberland. And I think that the, the object here is that we may see some things that, you know, look a little unfamiliar to us as people who are accustomed to seeing a neighborhood with a cul-de-sac and 10, 15 houses on it. So I think that we can expect to see something that, that might look a lot different and serve a lot different purpose for our community and our citizens. So I've had enough to say. I would like to have a motion, then some discussion.
I'll give you a motion, but first I, I, well, do you want the motion or some discussion?
Either one.
The discussion, one of the things that I think a lot about, and I get accused of thinking too much about some things. But I've thought a lot about this and I've asked my students before this question. How many of you in this room have spare bedrooms in your homes? Have spare bedrooms in your home?
You looking for some hands?
Even if you have families. And I bet there are people all across this room who have spare bedrooms in their home. And as a society, I think we don't have a housing shortage. We have enough bedrooms for people. We just don't have the structure or the culture to provide that housing for those people. It's just something to think about. And I'm not asking us all to change or all to start taking in people or, you know, stopping on the corner in Portland and asking someone if they need a place to sleep tonight, but
Allison can drop her two sons off.
It is, it is certainly something to think about. Okay. I ma, I move to approve the formation of a housing task force to be appointed by the town council to provide recommendations on ways to facilitate the development of affordable housing in the community.
I second that, Bob.
Thank you. My motion been made and a second. Any discussion, further discussion? Mike?
It's well known that the first attempt at this, I wasn't in favor of because I didn't have enough information. And I'm glad we took a pause. Because it, it really opened my eyes, gave me more information to make an informed decision. I am worried first and foremost about our seniors. And I've said since the 90s about on the council. The fact that we have a waiting list of a couple hundreds of seniors, many, many, probably over half that have been here for years and years and are looking for a place to go but remain in Cumberland, that's, that's always been my priority. We've, you know, we've got a set of new citizens in Maine that we, you know, we need to take them into consideration. This, those are a lot. I'm looking forward to this task force. It's not a mandate on the council that, I want to get that right out, which is one of the reasons I jumped on this. But I, I think it's important to get out, to get all the information. And, and we look at making some informed decisions down the road. And so I'm glad we took the extra time. I really am. I, I think it, and I think it's good for the public, too.
Allison?
Number one, I know Counselor Seaggrass can't be here tonight. And I think he voiced his support at previous meetings. But though he's not voting, I think it would be remiss to say he very much supports the formation of the task force. Sent us a letter, an email to that extent. Second, personally, I, I am very excited. You know, you noted a couple of folks that have come to you and voiced experience. I think we are extremely lucky and I continue to be wowed by the talent and just the experience within our town citizenry. And so I am really excited to see who raises their hand to be part of this and kind of the creative solutions and ideas that can come out of this when it's really just about a problem statement of affordable housing with not much kind of guardrails outside of that. So this very much has my support, which you'll see in a minute. But I just, I am really excited to just see what the, the talent and experience in our town can come up with with six months of, of time.
Brian?
I hope a lot of good comes out of this, and I think it will. I mean, I think we need to think outside of the box. I mean, I've been sitting here for 16 years now and there's nothing any more affordable now than there was 16 years ago. It's worse now than it was then. And I hope, there's a lot of educated people in this community. I hope they come forward and I hope we get some really good ideas because I'm on the upper edge of the ladder now and I may be looking for a place to live. I mean, but, but I think this, I think a lot of good will come from this and I think we'll all learn something. So I think it, I think I'm glad we did step back, like Mike said, and took another look at this. But I'm hoping there'll be a lot of really good information that comes out of this, and I think there will, so.
The other thing we forget is the legislature passed a law that nobody knows what the heck it's about. You know, I've asked the manager, I've talked to people, what's the new housing legislation? And nobody's got an answer. And we've got to get those answers before we go too far forward because nobody knows what the legislative mandated or didn't mandate. What changes they, that override our ordinances or don't override? So I'm looking forward to that being discussed. I don't know anything about the legislation, whether it's good or bad. I just know that it, it, it does affect what we're going to be doing here in Cumberland. So I'm, I'm hoping that's part of our overall discussion.
I just had a logistics question. So we are forming this committee tonight. When are applications due, those kind of things? You know, because there are people jumping at the bit, ready to get started because we're giving them six months and chop, chop.
Applications tomorrow, committee formation tomorrow night.
There'll be, there'll be an add-in the forecaster this week and there'll be also information on the cryo with all the details.
Okay, so there'll be a deadline and
Very quickly, I think it's June 17th, Brenda? 17th is the deadline for applications, so.
Good to know. So I can respond to you, Matthew Todd.
And I think to your comment, Bob, about the size, I think there's something to the seven or at least keeping it manageable. But I, I think kind of once the task force is formed, I think I would hope or expect that they do a second invite for experts that may not be able or willing to commit time for a six-month task force but have expertise that are willing to lend an evening or a workshop or things like that. So I'm, I'm less concerned with the seven. I think that's like a good size for the like, who's accountable to report back to the council? But maybe I'm saying this out loud, too. My expectation would be that this task force is not the end-all, be-all, that they have to have all the, the knowledge and that they would reach out and leverage others to support them in their work over the six months. They are just the seven kind of accountable to make the recommendation to the council.
I agree with you, Allison. We got to have a concept before we move forward. And I agree, and if we had a charge for these people, which we don't.
Which we don't.
Right. I mean, I think, that's why I, like Bob said, if we get seven, we get 10, great. And let's bring these ideas and get a concept and, and then charge them with going forward, so.
Well, with, with any, any public group, it is open to any member of the public to sit in and either observe and as, as invited, make comment. So that we're not going to, we're not going to say this is a private group of seven members and nobody else can, can do anything. I did want to follow up with what Mike said. And I appreciate the thought that, you know, making sausage looks, there's whatever that phrase is. But, you know, I enjoy and I appreciate and I think that the public enjoys and appreciates the engagement and the difficulty sometimes of coming to a consensus on, on an issue and seeing us struggle and go back and come again and work on something. But so anyways, that's all I've got.
I'll give you your motion.
There we go.
I think we did.
Did I already?
Charity motion, seconded.
Okay. And then discuss it some more.
So unless there is any other discussion, I will call for all those in favor. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right, item 22-071, to authorize the town manager to accept payment for delinquent fiscal year 19 and a portion of fiscal year 20 taxes in the amount of $12,893.25 on property identified as map R-03-lot 39B. If you folks recall the conversation we had two weeks ago on a similar property, a similar circumstances, this is a payment to make a make the town whole, there you go. And at which time we receive the payment, the lien will be taken off the property. And no, this is not a public hearing either, but is there anybody who would like to comment or make a motion?
I have a question of the manager, I think. This will not bring them current, will it?
No, it will not.
And this is to allow the sale of a parcel of the property?
You still would own the property of the, the applicant. It will be working to put, put together a plan like we heard a few weeks ago to become whole with all the taxes that are still owed and fees. This property would not be released unless we received a payment in full. No release mortgage will be issued until a payment in full is made.
And I guess that's what my question was. This is transfer of ownership, so I wanted to make sure that the town was made whole and not parcel payment before we did a transfer.
Absolutely.
That's, that's what my question was getting. Thank you.
In this case, there was a very specific plan that I think, but you have something before you as well.
I did see that.
So that, this is all in motion and could be as soon as the next 60 days.
I'll make a motion, Bob.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I move to authorize the town manager to accept payment for delinquent FY19 and a portion of FY20 taxes in the amount of $12,893.25 on property identified as map R-03-lot 39B. Further, I authorize the town manager to execute a release deed upon receipt of all taxes and fees due on the property.
Second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for vote. All in favor? Unanimous, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask the council, excuse me, the town manager a question on, not really related to this bill, but recently we took, there was a piece of property sold that the town was owed money on, because we had done some work on it.
Yes.
Do we need to go through the same process to authorize you to accept those funds?
No, because you authorized that with the, I'll call it a kind of a junior mortgage, a second mortgage. That was the document that we used to collect our 5,000. So that was encumbering that property already. That, that parcel was up to date on its taxes. So that was a little bit different circumstance, but we received that payment as well.
Great, thank you, Bill.
That property did sell.
That concludes the business part of our evening's agenda. Next item is new business. Shirley?
Well, I was excited to go first, knowing Mark wasn't going to be here to extend congratulations to him and his family. But you beat me to it. So congratulations, Mark, if you're out there watching us, and to you too, Angie, and the addition to your young family. And I loved the sentiment that you shared with us upon naming your little girl, about winter and hopefulness. I was unable to attend the rail use corridor meeting on Zoom and I asked for a copy of it sent to me and it was supposed to be sent to me and it has not been sent to me. And nor are the minutes. So I was wondering if you might use your
I have zero power. It's a ceremonial position only, so learning that quickly.
They were saying they can't, they can't publish it because then they would have to transcribe it all for the deaf and hard of hearing or whatever. But they could share it with individuals who request it. So I'm, again, requesting. I'm also requesting that we take a look at Middle and Tuttle Roads for maybe the implementation of a crosswalk and some traffic measures for people traveling down Tuttle Road, making a right-hand turn onto Middle Road. That intersection is broad and people take it at the speed limit. I have an 80-year-old aunt, she'll be 81 this month, and she frequently walks to Yarmouth. She walks to Storybrother's, she walks to her best friend's house, Mrs. Burr. And it's pretty dangerous for her to walk. So her son and she both came to me at the Memorial Day Parade and asked that we look at something. I was thinking perhaps I was thinking perhaps, I'm not an engineer, but perhaps striping it differently and maybe making some lines in the striping so people don't cut that corner so fast and so quick. And then maybe some, some crosswalks would make sense there because there is a lot more pedestrian activity on that road since we widened the shoulders. So if you could ask Chris to look into that or we could look into that, that would be great. On Saturday, I went to the Cumberland Fair celebration for their 150th birthday. And then we, we talk about community, Deb Dugis, Judy Gannon, Carolyn Small, they were all there at the, at the fair. Deb gave me this nice little banner. It's very tiny, but I told her I would proudly display it in front of the dais tonight. It was a fun, I was only there for a little while because I had to go out of town that afternoon, but it was so much fun. And so I'm going to put a little plug in for the Cumberland Farmers Club because they're not just the fair in September. They are dog shows and they are harness racing and they are world's largest garage sale or there are circuses. There are events going on at the Cumberland Farmers Club, fairgrounds all summer long. So try to get there if you can and support. This is one way, by leasing out the fairgrounds is one way to help the Farmers Club continue their great work. Shout out, congratulations to the seniors who graduated yesterday and a special shout out, I know we're not supposed to do this probably, to Matthew Gilbert. Matthew Gilbert is one of the top 10 seniors to watch. And Matthew Gilbert is a graduating senior at Greeley. He was a former student of mine. He's attending Cornell University on a full scholarship. We have seen Matthew here before for National History Day work. He's been part of the National History Day team. He's come to talk to us. He's been an active participant at Holy Martyrs. I'm, I'm only excited that I get to share this instead of Tom. He serves Mass daily since like third grade. He would come to school a little bit late because he would be at Mass in the morning serving. His, his goal is to become a priest. You don't hear of that very often, but in the meantime, he's been designated as the top bird watcher in Maine. He's able to identify hundreds of species by, by sight and sound. He's already taken part in graduate ornithology workshops at Cornell. And I'm super excited because I've known him since he was a little boy. He and, he went to my sister's daycare when he was a little kid, he and his brother. So I'm super excited. If you didn't catch it, maybe Whitney will put it in the crier this week, late to the, to the Portland Press Herald article for Matthew Gilbert. And one more thing, we had a nice little farewell appreciation celebration for Tom Gruber, who decided to vacate his term a little early. I would like to remind people who are interested in filling that vacancy that the applications for that are due this Friday. And that's all I have.
Two things. One, Shirley just reminded me talking about safety and streets. So you know, I bike, but I actually wasn't biking, but I did almost witness someone getting hit at the rail crossings. There's one direction when you are heading from Yarmouth on Greeley Road into town, that hill where we have the sign that says bikes can use the full lane, it's at the top of the hill. And so the cars come up and they can't see that a biker is in, in taking their full lane. And I almost saw a car hit a biker that was in the lane. So I don't know if it's just about moving the sign a little bit farther down or something else, Bill, but that's the only spot, like there's plenty of sightway on Tuttle Road and it's fine coming the other way. It's just the way that road curves, you can't see that there's a biker taking the lane as the sign says until you're like up on their butt. So excuse me, I love to say that. So that, that was just earlier this week. But the main topic I wanted to let the council know is that we've started to go through the survey data and I've gone through the demographic stuff, which is the easy, that's just data, right? So I thought I'd give you just a quick highlights and also to say that I think we'll be able to have the, a workshop to go through it in full in the coming weeks. But highlights were, one of our questions was the top 10 words that you think, or excuse me, the top words that you think of what Cumberland means to you. And the top word was community. Home was the second, safe the third, and family was fourth. So that was lovely to see as kind of the first thing to go through. The other I thought was, was interesting and I think really great is that the mix of respondents, if we look at all the demographic, very similar to actually the mix. While the respondent count was about double the respondents that we had last time, the mix in most of kind of the core demographics were the same. So as we kind of extrapolate and kind of compare and I would think the kind of same level of weighting and proportioning will be applied, so a fairly comparable mix. The biggest difference was a higher share of females responded this time than, than last, but really most things were a pretty similar mix even as we think of economic, households income, children, seniors, how long folks have lived in town, all fairly comparable. So more to come, but early read is I think this will be a good solid ability to do a pretty solid comparison to the prior. That's all I have for you.
I've just got a couple of things. The, it was really a nice reception for Tom today. It was good to see him and I still look down, I still look down the dais and expect him to see him there, so. Couple things, sympathy on at least on behalf of the council to the people of Uvalde, Texas. It's unspeakable. I just can't even fathom what they're going through, but our hearts are with them. I want to give the sympathy to the Flanagan family. Bruce Flanagan passed away. Bruce, I worked with Bruce with, in the state police. He retired almost 20 years ago and very active with the Farmers Club. He's actually past president of the Farmers Ranch Security for years there. So my sympathy to Julie and the kids. Mark and Angie, good luck and congratulations with your, with...
Ingrid.
Ingrid, thank you. And that's all I have.
A few things this evening. Congratulations to Mark. I myself have three sons, four grandsons and one granddaughter, so your boys are going to be a little jealous. Good luck to you. I was able to attend the Memorial Day Parade. It was a beautiful day. The weather couldn't have been any more perfect. It was very well attended and Bob, your speech was phenomenal, very good job. My condolences to the Flanagan family as well. Bruce was a patron of mine, a very, very good guy. What sticks in my head is seven or eight years ago, Bill, the, one of the EMTs here in town did a phenomenal job saving his life back then. And, you know, and it is sad to see him pass, but he had a few good years because of some of the due diligence of some town employees. It was very well, very well done. I have some money here tonight. Tom Gruber gave me $20. Dean, my good friend, gave me another $20, $20 from myself. Jim Moulton from North Yarmouth contributed tonight. And I have a check here for $500 from Mr. Eads that says to the Cumberland Food Pantry for each auction. And he's informed me too that from now on that his counsel page is to go to this process. So thank you, Mike. You're very generous and very well appreciated, so. And that's all I have.
Alex Foster also just...
Oh, look at this, Bill. I got another, another 20 out of Allison. Thank you very much, all of you. Appreciate it.
I can't help but think about the, you're, what you said there, Mike, about the shootings in Texas and I've used this position, I think, a little bit to, to move some things forward and some of them have created some head scratching. But I got thinking about it over the last week or so and I thought of my own experience growing up in this community and what it meant to, to own a gun, to have a gun, to go hunting and the exercise of that, that privilege because that privilege was extended by my father and it began and ended there. I had the opportunity to take a hunter's safety course here at Greeley High School when I was a kid. And again, it was under the understanding that it was required by my father. We went up to the, the, the shooting range there and I'm on black strap and we sighted the guns in and, you know, it was, it was a valuable experience, lessons learned. I went into service, I carried a sidearm. I had to qualify with it every year that I was on active duty. And so I've listened to the conversations go around about how we might reform and, and you know, prevent any more of these travesties and horrible things going. And I listened to some of the people that, communities are taking the lead or at least the conversation. So as, as a, as a group of community leaders, I think that we have certainly, if nothing else, we should set an example about what it is to have a responsibility of owning a firearm and what is the, how that plays out in our communities. And I expressed to a friend of mine recently, you know, nothing is more important than mentoring young people. So I don't have anything else. We have an executive section, executive session next, and I will ask for a motion to enter executive session.
Mr. Chairman, I'll give you a motion. I move to move into executive session pursuant to 1 MRSA 4056A reference town manager's evaluation.
A second.
Motion second. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you for those folks attending this evening. Have a good week.
That check was some visual tonight.
It is Bill's favorite time to get out. Well, I sent him out with homework, though.